It being six thirty-one on Monday, June twelfth, I'll hereby call this regular meeting of the Gardner School Committee to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, Mrs. Carmier.
President.
Mrs. Hurst.
President.
Mr. LaFreniere.
President.
Mrs. Leighton.
President.
Mrs. Palavan.
President.
Mr. Schwartz.
President.
Mayor Nicholson.
President.
And Superintendent Pellegrino.
President.
And Cameron, Cameron Student Rep is absent.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It being six thirty-one on Monday, June twelfth, I'll hereby call this regular meeting of the Gardner School Committee to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, Mrs. Carmier.
President.
Mrs. Hurst.
President.
Mr. LaFreniere.
President.
Mrs. Leighton.
President.
Mrs. Palavan.
President.
Mr. Schwartz.
President.
Mayor Nicholson.
President.
And Superintendent Pellegrino.
President.
And Cameron, Cameron Student Rep is absent.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is open time for the general public. Is there anyone here from the general public who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, moving on to item C, recognitions by the superintendent of our student council and peer mentors.
I am loving this. So, school committee representatives, committee members, I'm really excited to have student council from grade four here from Gardner Elementary School. It's the first class of Gardner Elementary School and it is the largest by far class of student council we've had in a long time and I think they deserve first off a round of applause. So, their leader, Christine Rana, would like to say a few words just about, she wasn't prepared for this, so I'm just putting her on the spot. Do you have two to give to this year?
Yes, of course. So, there were. So, we actually are able to be fortunate enough to have two different student leaders this group this year. We have the peer models and we have the student council. So, they both have different jobs. The student council were charged to do things for the community. They did things like fundraisers, they did things like go with the classrooms, they helped with the entire classrooms. Our peer models, who were fortunate enough to be able to identify students that were involved with helping our kids that were having a sense of lack of community. And so, our peer models going for classes would actually help those specific kids with feeling better about being at school and having some like. So, well, that's what they're doing.
Which is a huge help considering the number of students who actually come into the district each year. We know we have new students, we have over a hundred and thirty new students, actually a hundred and seventy I think we're up to now, new students to Gardner this year. So, I think it's a really important fact to have the peer models and I have to commend Christine for doing such a great job. I think she deserves a round of applause. No, what we would like to do now is, we'd actually like to call students up one by one and I'm actually going to give you a certificate if you would mind calling their names. Here's the list. Just prepare. It's okay.
Yeah, so I am District three, more families right now. I am horrible with last names and I have some people who are important about this, so I will do my best. Question for the peer models and student leaders. Do you want me to say your entire name or just your first name?
First name.
Alright, so I'm only going to call people that are here tonight and then I will grab the rest of these students and give them to you. Alright, the first one is Nick from the student council. New student council member, so we'll give it. Alright, so keep it so long, you guys go through now, right? Okay. The next one is three hours student council. Now we have Eddie. Hasalia. Alice. Alia.
Corrigan. Better quarter. There we go. Good shot.
Nice shot. Emma.
There we go.
Hagar.
Nice shot.
Ben. Nila. And Wally. We miss Eddie student council. Oh, and it's Tyler. Nyla. Alright, now for the peer models. Alright, for our peer models. Ian. We'll come back together. Alia. Ben, we got a Ben. Ahab. Oliver. On D L. Charlotte. Noah. And Alia. We miss Eddie student models. Um, two student councils will come back for her. Ready? Jasmine student council. Anybody else? Alright, thank you so much.
So, what we'd like to do is first, I want to thank you guys for your service because actually service back to the school, back to your community, that's really how we made a community. That's how you create a better place for yourself today. So, I really appreciate all the work that you guys did and it was all in you to do this. Thank you very much. Now, I would like to do two things. So, the first, we usually have a picture. So, usually the picture is up on the elevator, but I don't think we're going to be able to do this. My math skills might, are a little off, but I don't think we're going to do this inside. Can we go to the front stairs and maybe take a picture around the front stairs? And then if you want to come up to the three hour meeting.
The committee will be in recess until we come back from the picture. Thank you all.
What is it?
Nice. Love it.
The committee will come back to order at 6:51 PM and we'll go to item G, the consent agenda. This was included in your packet. Is there a motion on the floor?
So move, second.
Motion made by Mr. LaFrenier, second by Mr. Schwartz, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item E, reports of subcommittees, facilities, subcommittee, Mr. Schwartz.
Actually, I have two reports. April 13th, we met at Elm Street School. You probably don't have it because I don't, but I remember what I wrote. So the intention of that facilities meeting at Elm Street was, one, to look what's going on at the Galt and to look at the upcoming superintendent's office on the second floor. And so I'll talk a little bit about the first floor where Galt is. They have the entire first floor, except you have to have been in the Elm Street School when it was a high school. So I'll try to clarify what I'm talking about. The first floor, on each wing, there are two double doors on each wing. And on the left side, Becky's office, past, just past the double doors. On the right side is a huge classroom. I forget whose classroom it was at the time. But that is the Galt's sort of the dining room. It's large enough to accommodate everything they need to do with eating. The office stays the same, located in exactly the same place. Superintendent's office, I mean the principal's office is to the left of, just left of the office. On the second floor, just about every room will be designated for some staff member of the superintendent's administration. And if you know, in the backside, which was like the building extension, student services are going in that extension. And that's about the extent of my, of that April 13th meeting. And we met on June 8th at the elementary school. It's not long, so. I just wanted to make a comment that during graduation, the concession stand and the restroom facilities are open, being used. I thought that was fantastic. You may say, well, so what? But it's a brand new facility and it's taking care of the needs of the people at that activity that we had on the graduation. But it does need, and I'll have to talk to the superintendent about it, there are no, there's no cooking facilities there, nor is there a refrigeration. Wayne tells me that it's, thinks it's in the works, but I'm not sure. So we'll talk about that later. Watkins Field, we have talked for at least three or four years now, whether the maintenance department has the machinery to care and maintain the turf field. They do now have that equipment. So that's a, that's a big plus. And then we talked about Elm Street School property and Helen Mae Sauter School and property going surplus. You all have pictures and there is an agenda item for this, but I'll just describe it. That is the Helen Mae Sauter School, the whole front of the building, all the grass, the big chair, flagpole, the baseball diamond in the rear and the football field, and the playground and what used to be the girls' field hockey field to the rear of Elm Street School. It's going to be an item agenda to declare all that property surplus as of June, as of July 14th. And also the administration building on 70 Waterford Street and the little child's playground right adjacent to that building. We're going to want to declare that as surplus as well as of July 14th. And that is my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Chairman Schwartz. Moving on to finance, subcommittee, Ms. LaFrenier.
Thanks, Ms. Maia. The finance committee met on June 8th at the elementary school. The committee reviewed the expense report. Mr. Hawk noted that the process to close unused POs and transfer funds within the budgets to cover any negative balances has started. Mr. Hawk also presented the current status of all revolving funds. All funds are healthy and should end of the year with positive balances. A few questions were asked regarding the expense report and revolving funds. All answered adequately and once again, we just talked about the concession stand being complete with a few punchless things that need to be done and it was used for graduation. And that was the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Comments, concerns on either of those two reports this evening?
Just one quick comment. I think the central office isn't moving, isn't, we're not giving out a surplus yet, only because, only because we're going on for a little bit longer. We expect to move out the week of July 10th, but we've expected to move out a couple of times and just in case, we're holding on to that.
At the, at the meeting, Mr. Hawk had a picture of your, your building and the playground and said we want to put that on too. But I guess things have changed since then. Okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Cameron is not here today, so we're moving to item G, discussion items, new business, item number 3526, the Keystone Educational Collaborative, Jocelyn Street, purchase. Dr. Pellegrino?
So this I think is 134 Jocelyn Street in Lemonster. Keystone Collaborative is expanding. In order for them to expand and to purchase anything, they need a school committee vote from each of the member towns. So they are expanding services. The need is pretty great. We've been looking for a while. They actually had looked out in Shirley and they were going to be buying one out there. I advocated against that only because it's so far from our members. This place is only 14 miles, so in terms of transportation, if we did need use of the services, it makes a lot more sense for us. So I am definitely in favor of purchasing this particular property. It sounds like they'll give them the expansion that they need. I think it's 10 classrooms or so. So I think it's a, I think it's a good move. And so it does need a vote of the school committee to approve or...
Is there a motion on the floor?
Should I move? Second.
Motion made by Ms. Ward Layton, second by Mr. Schwartz, to approve of the purchase from the Gardner School Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Schwartz.
Mr. Pellegrino, Dr. Pellegrino.
Yep.
Is this building going to be in addition to the current facility?
Yes.
Or it's going to be in addition?
Yeah.
Where our assessment fees might go up because of that?
Uh, no, this is, no. This, that won't go up. This is, they're, they're taking out a loan for the money, so this isn't going to be a huge burden to us. And typically, they have, they do have the excess in deficiencies, so they have money, they have money set aside for that.
That's all I have.
Oh, I was just going to mention, it's actually not for us to purchase. It's for Keystone Collaborative.
Correct.
To purchase, so, just to make sure.
Oh, I meant the vote from the Gardner School to purchase. Yes, I should have clarified that one, yes. Uh, Mrs. Hurst.
Thank you for advocating for Lemonster. No, it, it's huge, you know? Because a lot of the collaboratives are further away and, you know, it's important to have things out this way too.
Absolutely. Especially considering that the, the point is to have them close so the kids don't have to drive an hour.
Right, right.
It's crazy, yeah.
Right.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number 3527, declaration of surplus property for Helen Mae Sauter School, Stonefield and the Elm Street School playground. Again, this declaration of surplus transfers ownership and custodianship of these properties from the school department to the city as a whole. The city has been advised by our legal department before we can do anything with them, we have to parcel out those properties as those all sit on one big parcel between the two schools and the playground and Stonefield and everything else with it. So nothing can be done until that's done for the city side. This just transfers custodianship over to the city.
So move, second.
Motion made by Ms. LaFrenier, second by Mr. Schwartz, to declare those properties surplus. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. I believe this needs to be two-thirds for a declaration of surplus. So Terry, would you mind calling a roll?
This is a roll call, right? Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. LaFrenier?
Yes.
Mrs. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Philalden?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
All right, that's 126, yes.
Thank you very much.
The agenda not yet to vote.
Yes, thank you. Item number 3528, the fiscal year 2024 contract amendments for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Unit A and Unit B. Mrs. Hurst.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the amendments to the contracts.
As proposed, teachers. I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, second by Mrs. Schwartz, to accept the contract as proposed. This is for clerical staff of the schools. Is there any discussion on the, Ms.?
Are we going to do them separate then for each? Because there's the clerical staff and then the GEA, Unit A and Unit B.
Oh, there's, okay. Oh, GEA, Unit A and Unit B, I'm sorry. That was the asking. All right, so this is for the clerical staff and then the Gardner Teachers Unit, Unit A and Gardner Teachers Unit B. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, second by Mr. Schwartz. Is there any discussion on the motion?
This is for the AFSM, right?
AFSM, are we doing, Mrs. Hurst, we like, three together?
It's for both unions, for the GEA, for the teacher, the teachers' union, Unit A and B, and the secretary's union.
Okay.
Did you want to do it separately because, yes?
Well, I should abstain on the GEA, so the AFSM I could vote on.
Okay, so this will be on the AFSM vote if that's okay with Mrs. Hurst and Mrs. Schwartz? Just on the AFSM union contract amendments as presented in your packet, is there any discussion on the motion? This is the clerical staff only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Again, for the fiscal year 2024 contracts amendments for the teachers' union, the GEA Unit A and GEA Unit B. Both of these are teachers' units. Mrs. Hurst? Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, is there a second?
Sorry.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ward Layton.
I was getting confused or something.
To approve, this is to approve the contract amendment for the teachers' union, Unit A and Unit B. Is there any discussion on this motion? Mrs. Ward, uh, Layton already said, thank you though. And Ms. LaFrenier, you said you're abstaining from this?
I'm abstaining from this one, yes, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. One abstention. Thank you very much. Item number 3529, superintendent's evaluation, Attorney Palavan.
Um, you guys were sent the, I guess, cumulative evaluation from the full committee and as you will see, basically everything fell in significant progress or met or exceeded the goals. And then in regards to the overall performance, basically the committee all said proficient or exemplary in regards to the goal set by the superintendent and how he's been running the district. So I make a motion that we accept the full committee report as the evaluation of the superintendent.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, second by Mr. Schwartz, to accept the superintendent's evaluation as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number 3530, curriculum coordinator's update. This was included in your packet for informational purposes. Is there any questions, comments, concerns on the presentation?
I just, we have to handle one more thing under the evaluation for the raise.
That's right, yes. It wasn't on the agenda, so I forgot. Attorney Palavan.
Um, I make a motion that we do a 5% raise for the superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, second by Ms. Ward Layton, to approve a 5% salary raise for the position of the superintendent of schools. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Well deserved.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 3530, curriculum coordinators update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any other, is there any questions, comments, concerns on this update that you received? Hearing none, thank you, Dr. Gogan. Item number 3531, grant administrator's update. This comes with the presentation this evening. Director Dunn.
I haven't been here in a while, so I don't even think I've seen those.
Well, you've been on. You're careful. Love that for me.
It's been more important anyway. So it's just in the PDF. Do you want me to?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Okay, so this will be quick. You guys have most of this information from finance anyway, but I just wanted to make sure that I was able to be here to share just more specific information about each of our grants that we have. I kind of sectioned it off as entitlement grants and some of our competitive grants. And then just moving forward, kind of the things that we're working on right now.
Is it not going down?
I mean, it is, but it's halfway. Oh. Oh, there you go. Oh, you're doing it.
I need to put it in the presentation here.
That's okay. They all, they have, they have it in their packets as well. So for entitlement grants, I know you guys are all pretty familiar with the title grants, titles one, two, three, and four. They each have different programmatic requirements. Dr. Gogan manages title one, two, three, and four are managed by me. They, you know, year over year, we have some fluctuation between all of these, including the IDEA grants just based on our population, the census, just different formulaic things that change though year over year. So as you can see, for FY '23, we actually did have more funding in the totals, but depending on which grant program it was associated with, it does impact our funding, which impacts our programming. And so it's important that, you know, while it looks great on paper that the totals, we have more money and some of the sections we have less. And so we do make adjustments to programming for that. So, and then the IDEA grants are managed by Joyce West's office, the Director of People Personnel Services. And then the CSHS grant, which you guys are all very familiar with because they've had it for a very long time, is managed by the Director of Public Health Services. So the next slide that I put in here, I went into a little bit more detail because one of the entitlement brands that we get a lot of questions on is the SR funding that we received during COVID. And then associated with this SR3 grant is one that we're using next year, which is the Improving Ventilation and Air Quality, which we call for short HIDEC. But in here, I did list out some of the things that we spent, spent this funding on this past year. So so far, out of the $5.9 million, this was about $2.4. And we spent this partially on my own salary, but is also to relieve our local budget because of the influx of SOA funding that we were sort of waiting for with our paraprofessionals and classroom tutors. We also paid for our MTSs teacher leader stipends out of the SR funding and plan to do the same thing next year. This year, we also did pay for some retention stipends for our staff out of this funding. Some of our contractual services in here that we listed were the Souza IT contractor, as well as our gateway program that supports our students accessing college programming at Mount Waukesha. And then we did spend a small amount on HVAC project that you guys have seen a lot about in the facilities meetings. Just a small, small amount out of SR3 for FY '23 and then the remainder of the project will hopefully be done in FY '24. And then one of the last things, the supply line item here, our Intermath curriculum, which is really a district-wide item that Dr. Gogan's presented on a few times. So for next year, for FY '24, we're leaving a couple of the things, like my, part of my salary, the teacher leader stipends that we are offering and then the HVAC project at GHS, which out of this fund is a little bit over $3 million. And then finally, in supplies for this, for this one, is really maintaining our one-to-one status for our students with the computers that were purchased during COVID. As we move towards a more virtual world, Intermath curriculum, Wonders curriculum, Lexia, all of these things that have available add-ons on computers, we want to make sure that our students can access the full breadth of all of the things that we're purchasing with our funding. So the Improving Ventilation and Air Quality Grant was an allocation that was given to us. It's a little bit over half a million dollars. Also to be spent on the HVAC project at GHS, which will be rooftop units to support the congregating spaces at GHS.
You'll notice that the teacher salaries aren't in here. The reason we don't typically, we try to avoid putting teacher salaries in here because it's not 9% surcharge because we're paying to MTRS for that. And for some reason, the federal grants, they require us to pay an additional 9%, so we lose 9% of how much we're paying in salaries. So we try to avoid that. We want to use the money to the greatest of that.
Yes. So competitive grants, you'll notice some of these here that I listed as competitive grants for this year are things that we've had for multiple years. So one of them is a year or two, we're in year two of a three-year grant, for example. We are still managing this funding. We're definitely managing the projects as well. So we did receive some funding to support biotechnology coursework and supplies at Gardner High School. We received a lot of mental and behavioral health supports. We also received a small school nutrition equipment grant, early college and innovation pathways support grants. So those really do support the programming that we are building at Gardner High School. And those will hopefully continue as the years move forward. I know that right now and on my next slide, I talk about some of the things that we're working on for FY '24, but I did not add this because this just came about. But we're starting the application already for FY '24 Innovation Pathways funding and then also working on the FY '24 early college funding as well. So one thing here, this, I just wanted to note, I'm sure Dr. Pellegrino's talked about this in these meetings, but we have been working for months on a partnership with Monty Tech. And this actually wasn't really a grant application. It was more a designation application to work towards accessing grant funding. So without applying, getting designated as a Perkins program, we can't access Perkins funding. Monty Tech is working on building a facility to conduct more after dark programming. And so as part of this partnership, it is Gardner, Narragansett, and Fitchburg that are working with Monty Tech to create two different pipelines for students to access carpentry and electrical. And then in the future, it will be hopefully adding space for plumbing as well. And so not only would we be able to access grant funding to help support them hiring full-time staff for this program to benefit our kids, it would be 10 juniors and 10 seniors a year. But we would also be eligible for a coding amount of money from the state that would go directly to them.
This has been huge, you know, and another program that we have running, which doesn't have anything to do with this, but I'm really excited about, is our automotive program. We have gone out, but, but by Matt, 90 builders. We have gone 19 students who applied for next year. So we had 14 students went through this year. So we're really excited to have that program to be able to offer that. Because I think the vocational, you know, options, you know, if we can't get them, you know, within our technical school, then we have to figure out how we're going to get them to our kids.
And so one thing I wanted to note, just while I'm still on the slide, like I said before, we're working on innovation pathways already. But one of the things I'm really excited about that I feel like I haven't had a chance to really say out loud is how collaborative we've all become on whether or not we go for grant funding. So it, you know, there is a lot of buzz about, oh, there's more money available. And that gets really, really exciting for all of us. But I think over time, what we're realizing is it's all of our people that are working on these programs and they're really doing their best to give the most access possible to all of our kids. And so when we're really, really strategic and we work together as a, as a leadership team with our principals to decide well, I think we're doing a much better job of implementing a lot of the programming that we're working on with this funding so that it's the most impactful. So not always the most dollars, but definitely has a greater impact.
And I have to say one more, one more thing about this particular program. Originally, they said no to this. So Monty Tech had already jumped in. They purchased the place like they're, they're moving forward because this is such a cool program, I'll just describe it. We're really excited about it. But when they looked at the program, they said, well, this doesn't meet the after dark application, uh, application guidelines. This is not really a after dark program, so I don't know how to get funding for this. Now there's one person in Desi. And then, you know, we kind of, kind of had a little bit and they put us in front of a larger group and it was, you know, according to actually Paula Volger, who, when she described the program, they got it. And they said, not only are you getting funding, but this sounds like it might be a model for later on. So this is a really creative way to do this. And I have to say, you know, Monty Tech was, was great to come forward with this in the first place. But I think there's been a lot of creativity from the group, the neck collaboration, you know, between districts. And this, this little Beltway that we have coming on here is, I think, just going to serve our students better and better with it.
And so just the last slide is what, oh, yep, not the last slide yet. So this is just a quick update on certain logistical things that really only impact myself, Mark Hawk, and Mark Pellegrino. But Desi is actually changing over to a new grants management system. So for a little while, we'll be straddling EdGrants and GEMS, which is their new lingo in their new system. It's going to operate totally on a reimbursement basis. So I know that as we look at accounts and things, that might start to put up some red flags, I think. But we do have to spend the funding before we're able to be reimbursed, whereas right now, we're able to request funding that we anticipate using in the next 30 days. So that's a big change and that's starting on July 1. We can't process any of our FY '24 grant applications until GEMS opens on July 1, too, which is why there's this little bit of push for planning right now for Innovation Pathways and those other grants. All of our FY '23 grants, so title one, all those grants that run multi-years will remain in EdGrants. That's what I mean when I say straddle. They'll remain in EdGrants until they close. But what I do love about the system, what I've noticed a lot, and I actually have not yet gone to their full training, but what I've noticed by using it is that it ju, it just does create a more seamless process with less paper. Hawk is part of the process now, so there's a workflow in there that goes to Mark Hawk and then goes to Mark Pellegrino and then goes to Desi. And so it creates a little bit more work for them, but a lot of accountability and also aligns better with our MUNIS system. So I think they did, they did a really, really good job of aligning some of it and it aligns the grants and the way that we apply for them more closely with the way we operate MUNIS so that the annual reports and things like that will get a little bit easier, I think. And so the statewide GEMS training is in person at the DCU Center on Monday, the 26th. And so I will be there attending that. And so I just wanted to make sure I let you guys know that. And then.
Um, the reimbursement process didn't, so that makes me a little nervous because then we could purchase something or go through a process. Could they then say no to the reimbursement or is?
No. So it's a fiscal reimbursement, so they, they accept all of our expenditures on the application process. So if something changes, I, I mean, they, I don't know that they'll be looking at the programmatic piece so much as the dollar amount. But they approve all of our programmatic pieces upon application. So I think they'd have a really difficult time.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Yes. No, and I, right now, in all of the grants, I really do operate on mostly a reimbursement basis anyway just because at the end of the year, instead of sending a check back to Desi, it's better to leave the funding there if we don't have a need for it. So like if there's seven or eight dollars left over at Desi, I'd rather leave it there than waste the postage. And so that's kind of how I operate anyway, is really just kind of having a really in-depth understanding of what is going in and what we're actually spending. So I've been working kind of that way for this whole time anyway. So my next slide is just for questions. So if anybody has any other questions, I am here to answer them.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, great job. Thank you.
You're amazing. You need to, you need to get her a cape and a tiara.
Thank you, Director Dunn. Next item on the agenda, item three, five, three, two, the special education update. This was included in your packet for information. Are there any questions, comments, concerns?
I have.
Yes, Ms. Ward Layton.
So I actually went to the wellness committee meeting. It was May 18th that Becky McCaffrey invited us to. And one, the, the mental health portion of it, the, the use of Care Solus, the way it was explained, and it's, it's going to be really great, especially for, I mean, it's great for everybody, and it's really, it's great that they're really pushing for staff to also use it. But for families, the, and Joyce did a really good job of describing it, is that it's basically, you go to them, you say, hey, I need these services. They take care of all of the organization for them. So this is like a, kind of like a one-stop shop. They will locate them for you, come back. So, you know, for any parents, teachers, anyone that's listening, I know that they got some requests and some usage already, but this is, this is going to make it a lot easier for people to access mental health services outside of the school. So it, it was a really great meeting, and it was really great to hear that. This is in addition to the employee assistance program, I believe. So it was, it was just a really great meeting, it was great to hear about it. So kudos to the wellness team and to Joyce for reporting on it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Next, in the fall, we should have an update on how it works once now it's being used a little bit better, the Care Solus.
Sure. Awesome. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Ms. West. I'm moving on to the special education parents advisory committee update. Mrs. Hurst.
I'm going to work with, excuse me, Lori, over the summer to put together a tentative, you know, list with monthly meetings and look for some speakers if need be, and just try to help, you know, organize things and get ready for September. So that's where we're at with that. And she's pretty, she's pretty excited to have help and move forward.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Item number three, five, three, four, Massachusetts School Building Authority, new building project update. Dr. Pellegrino.
Actually, I would turn that over to you.
We had a great ribbon cutting on last, yeah, it was last Wednesday?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday. Thank you. Everything matched together this time of year. Thank you to everyone who attended. We had the full school committee there, that was really neat, I thought. And then to have the entire community there and a lot more people than I was expecting, it was just great to be able to celebrate that. If you haven't gotten a chance to tour the school, I highly recommend it, especially when school gets out. But it's just something to be very proud of in the community. Really looking forward to that. And I think probably September will be the last time we have this on the agenda. If there's anything else we have to wrap up over the summer.
I hope so. Yes, I expect it to be done by then, yes.
I think we still have to meet, though, like, we meet for like another year.
Oh, yeah. The building committee will meet for another year, but I mean permanent item on the school committee agenda for that one. But thank you all for attending. Item H, communications, Dr. Pellegrino.
So, you know, just a few things, you know, I want to say congratulations to Gardner Middle School bands. Great East, they, they, their standings were on Friday, June 2nd, 2023. The fifth, sixth, and seventh grade bands all earned gold medals. The fifth grade chorus earned a gold medal, and sixth and seventh grade earned a platinum award, which is 97 out of plausible 100 points. The sixth grade chorus has now earned a platinum medal two years in a row. And Mr. Davilli and Mr. Zwarro appreciate the administration and city for their support of the music programs in GPS. He wanted me to read this because he's done a phenomenal job in the growth, if you've gone to any of the music programs at the, at the middle school or the elementary school, the turnout from kids, families, I mean, it's just, it's just a boon, I think, for the, for our arts program and ultimately for our educational programs. So I think that's absolutely wonderful. I do have to say, onto something a little less happy for me is, you know, Mr. Murphy, you know, longtime principal, five years, I, I think now at this point, for Gardner Middle School is, is moving on. He's going to be the principal of Munson Middle High School, it's a seven through, seven through 12, small little school, about 300 students or so. He has to do the right thing for his family, and he was, you know, we part ways under very good terms. He was a great principal here, and I wish him the best. We will be having a replacement, obviously. We have some great candidates. I've invited you all, and actually I had several responses, people who want to be involved in the interview process. We're looking at pushing this quickly, so sometime next week. And we'll have different committees. We want to definitely involve some parents, some, obviously some staff, the, the, the administrators that are still there for next year, and central office. So we're going to make sure that we have several different perspectives when it comes to evaluating the, these principal candidates. Because this is a really important position in a, at a really important time. So thank you, though, to Mr. Murphy for all his work and all his dedication to Gardner Public Schools. And I'm going to miss him greatly, quite frankly. Second, or third, thank you very much for the evaluation. I appreciate that. I'll be talking to, you know, individuals about, you know, each one of you individually, just to talk about, so next year, what do you want to see? What, where can I grow? What are some, what are some things that I can work on specifically? So I'll definitely be doing that with you all. Other than that, this is the last school committee meeting we have for this year, and I'm very excited for the summer. But we are still in school right till June 30th at Gardner Elementary School. So things are still going strong, the teachers have been wonderful, staff has been wonderful, and my administrators have been absolutely fantastic. And I have to say, my central office staff, I could not have made it through this year if it wasn't for you guys. So thank you very much for all you guys do. And with that, I will turn things over.
Moving on to final comment to the school committee, Mrs. Ward Layton.
I guess just, it was a, it was a great year on the committee, and thank you all for continuing to help me as the freshman in my freshman term. Congratulations to the graduates. I really enjoyed the speeches this year, they were funny. And I, I think Paula Bulger, she kept commenting on how, just how chill the kids were. And you could see it in just their demeanor and the way they spoke about each other. And it was just, and I keep like, in my head, I keep thinking about like, eventually when my kids will be up there, you know, doing it, and makes me teary-eyed. I think like, you and I always end up getting teary-eyed at graduation. I don't know about Rachel.
I always said.
Oh, yeah. It was, it was a really beautiful ceremony. It's just, it's good to be a part of that. And I guess just have a fantastic summer. Have a great summer, stay well.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Hurst.
I'd like to just thank everybody for everything that they've done this year, teachers, administrators, everybody. To see those kids tonight, to me, is just amazing because they're our future leaders, you know. I had a little, I have a journal, I call it my book of thoughts, and I wrote this, and I brought it, I, so I wouldn't mess it up. So I had gone to graduation, so this is what I wrote when I got home. "I just got home from graduation and my heart is full. Seeing firsthand the proud families in the bleaches and hearing the cheers as the students receive their diplomas fills me with a sense of community and pride. It's a reminder to me as to why I wanted to run for school committee initially. During my time here, I've had the privilege of witnessing and supporting the positive changes and initiatives that have benefited and will continue to benefit all students. My heart is full as I look around and see the smiling faces of the people behind the scenes, helping to make this day special for everyone attending. And it makes my heart full to know that our district is full of so many who are dedicated to teaching, nurturing, and readying our students for days like today. It reminds me that we're all pieces of a picture so much bigger than ourselves."
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hurst. Attorney Palavan.
That's sort of, that's tough to follow, but I would. I would like to congratulate the graduates. I wasn't able to be at graduation this year, but I know I do get teary-eyed every time. And yeah, I hope everybody has a happy, healthy summer, and hopefully it doesn't get too warm by the end of this month so that the school buildings can stay nice and cool.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schwartz.
It's great to have the fourth grade of the elementary school here today. They're being promoted into the fifth grade. That was great, and a large class at that. Both graduations were excellent. I attended the Gardner High School one, had a gaul one. I really liked the gaul because I think those students worked a lot harder to get that graduation, that diploma. And I really enjoy listening to them and then getting their diploma. So I think everyone have a great summer. See you in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lefrenier.
Thank you. Just want to congratulate the graduates. I wasn't able to attend that this year. I wasn't able to attend the gaul. In the past for the gaul, I'd always been there for years. We used to put on the luncheon for the graduates, and I will say that, that one's phenomenal. Just seems, those students have more obstacles to achieve what they want to achieve as far as getting their diploma. That's always nice. And a well-deserved, you know, good evaluation for Dr. Pellegrino. I know I've said it before, but this has been the easiest, most pleasant time on the school committee. It's my 20th year, and it's, it just, the way everything's working, so smooth, everyone seems to be working together, all the schools seem to be working together, the staff. And I also want to thank your staff. You always tell us, you couldn't do it without them, so thanks to them, too. Great to have them all on and working like a perfectly oiled machine. And everyone have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cormier.
It was great to see those fourth graders out here tonight. I know weeknights are very hectic for all families, but to see that many parents, as well as children here tonight, I've never seen that many people in here. And their enthusiasm was infectious, just hearing their laughter and being so proud of jumping up and, and getting their certificates was awesome. And that is a good reminder to all of us, I think, why we're here. We're pretty far removed from the students themselves, but to see them is, is a good reminder of what we're doing. I also just wanted to draw attention to Mr. Murphy's report in our, in our packet. He included an email from a retired music educator that was a judge at their Great East performances. And they did great, they got the platinas and golds, but this makes me even more proud. This person took the time to email in and say how well behaved the students were, how respectful they were, and how organized the staff was, and that the whole experience with the judge and the Gardner students was great. At being a music person through my whole life and the mayor as well, you, we perform with pride. It's not about being the best and outperforming your bails as being proud of what you're doing. And we tell the students to perform with pride, and clearly they're doing that. I'm sure there's plenty of other groups in Gardner that would get the same review. This is the one that was sent in. And I'm just really proud of the students for getting that reaction from out in the, out in the field.
Thank you, Ms. Cormier. Not much more for me to say that's already not been said. However, I do want to extend an invitation to the school committee members on Tuesday, June 27th, at three different points during the day, so if you can't make one time, that's okay. One of the things Gardner's done is that we've incorporated a lot more civics education into our curricula before the state mandated it. The entirety of the third grade will be visiting City Hall for a field trip that day in three separate tranches of 100 each. So if you'd like to come help give tours of City Hall to help our third grade students get a chance to see what goes on right here and how their city functions, I'll be sending out those times to the school committee if you'd like to participate, and I would love to have you here for them. Other than that, just a happy summer for everyone, look forward to seeing you again in September. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, second by Ms. Lefrenier, to adjourn. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Happy summer, everyone.